Okay, folks. Good evening, welcome to the Carver Board of Selectmen February 25th, 2014 Board of Selectmen Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before anybody asks, just want to let you know that our colleague Ms. Hewens is under the weather. She will not be here with us tonight. We wish her a speedy recovery. A little bit of housekeeping before we get into the meat of the agenda. There are openings on the following committees: Bike Path Committee, Business Development Commission, Carver Cultural Council, Carver Housing Authority, a state representative, Commission on Disability, the Earth Removal Committee, which they're looking for a Growers' Representative, Finance Committee, Local Housing Partnership Committee, Marcus Atwood Trustees, Old Colony Regional Vogec Tech School Committee, and Town Building Study Committee. Please contact the Selectmen's Office for an application. Additionally, as we do every meeting, we want to continue to solicit for donations to the food pantry. They can be made at the Council on Agent or the public library. There's still a significant need out there, and it's not going to be going away. Thank you for your generosity. It's appreciated. Last day to pull papers for elected positions is March 6th.
Six.
And the last day to submit is March 10th. And as of yet, we are...have no applicants for the Carver Housing Authority, a three-year term, and the North Carver Water District Commission, a three-year term. So if anyone is interested in running for those seats, please feel free to see the town clerk and her staff and take out some papers. All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to have the Powers and Sullivan Exit Conference on the FY13 Audit and Management Letter, and we have Mr. Sullivan here, the principal of the firm.
Good evening. Again, my name's Dick Sullivan. I am the engagement partner to the town. With me tonight, sitting behind me is Haley Fino, since she was the person who was out here doing the fieldwork along with another assistant and myself. My understanding, if it's okay, I'm going to take this out, that's easier for you to know, is that the first part of the presentation is to kind of just walk you through a little bit about how to understand the information you have in front of you. And I'm going to try to get through that in a reasonable amount of time, and then just segue into what hopefully you'll see here, and maybe have some understanding of what you're going to be looking at and what we're opine on. Apply that to how I saw the FY13, not only the audit, but also how your financial position looked at the conclusion of the audit. So just starting out, just to get a quick understanding, I talk about the objective. You get three different reports. I'm only focusing on two. I'm going to focus on the basic financial statements in the management letter, because your federal awards report takes care of itself. And what I want you to know is, what are the kind of things that you should be looking at when you're looking at these financial statements, to get an understanding of it? The reason I think it's important for you to understand what's in there, maybe at least get a glean of what's being presented, is because the rating agencies are doing the same thing. And I know the town's going to be going out for some debt. I think your rating right now is AA minus, and is that...am I right on that?
Just got a little bump up.
Oh, that's great. That's terrific. So that you can understand what they're looking for in terms of trends. The first thing that I did quickly is just to talk about the two different, what I call businesses. In the private sector, motivation is to earn profit. That's it. In the governmental sector, profit is not part of your equation per se, it's to provide services. However, as we get further into it, you're going to have to...you're going to begin to understand that while profit isn't your major motivator, the ability to develop reserves is. And the only way to build the...to develop reserves is to, in fact, have some profit on a regular basis. You might know it as free cash. Now, I get this often in terms of, we talk about GASB, we talk about FASB, and, you know, DOR, and it's...the idea, as I call it, is who makes the rules here? Please understand that the FASB and then the GASB, which drives the way the financial statements are put together, the notes, the actual presentation in terms of GASB 34 compliance, they are not law. What they are is a bodies that are developed so that if somebody picked up the Town of Carver's financial statements in Carver, Massachusetts, and picked up somebody in like Torrance, California, they would be able to compare and contrast, because the standards of reporting are the same across the nation. And that's what these two bodies do. The idea behind it is so that they can...so that Moody's, if they were trying to rate the town versus somebody else, among your peers, say, they would look at your financial statements, they'd look at your statement of net position, they'd look at your balance sheet, they'd look at your budget actual statement, as was all the notes, and compare you to somebody else. And that's how they do it. I think a strong role in complying, we are not the owners of it. The town management is the owners of it. And that's a clear distinction that you should know. One of the things you'll also want to know, and when you're looking at the auditor's report, is, and that's the two pages that we own, if there's something going that is not correct with the financial statements because of a misstatement, because of an omission, it will be listed in that report. Now, the town has unmodified opinion. Before, they used to be called unqualified until this year. They actually changed some of the wording. You have the best opinion that a community can get in terms of the way your financial statements are presented. But if you saw something other than that, you would be concerned. Like, for instance, in the management letter, in an informational comment, we mentioned that be sure to get your OPEB actuarial report, so that you can stay compliant with GASB 45. If you did not get that annual actuarial report, your financial statements would not be correctly stated, and you would have an adverse opinion as it relates to that particular liability. So the idea of us having something, what I call an informational comment in your management letter related to that, is so that you do not find yourselves in a situation where you're not compliant, and as a result, you would have to have an adverse opinion. There are six sections, and just so you know, if you're flipping pages on what I've given you, turns out that I downloaded pretty much the same, but it's a little different, what you have in your hard copy. I'm going to try to remember what I wrote, but most of it's on here. But there are six sections to the opinion. There's the report on the financial statements. There's a section called Management's Responsibility, which clearly states that management is responsible for any omissions and/or misstatements in the financials. There's a section in there that says what we're responsible for. And what that is, is we're telling you that we're there to conduct the audit in accordance with standards that are considered generally accepted auditing standards. And what that does, that doesn't mean that we actually look at everything. What it means is, is that we go through your balance sheet and your P&amp;L, and determine where we think the risk areas are as it relates to the audit. And based on those risk areas, we develop audit procedures to allow me, at the end of the day, to know that we've covered as much as we should cover, we've limited the risk associated with our work, and I can sign that report and opine on your financial statements. The other pieces are, which we just talked about, the opinion. There's the three types of opinions. You are unmodified, and then you have something called Required Supplementary Information, where your budget actual schedule is. And there's some other report that has to be issued in conformance with government auditing standards, and that's called the Yellow Book Report. And that's in a separate report that goes along with the Schedule of Federal Awards. Now, thinking about the audit. The audits usually are done sometime between one and seven months after year-end. And the important thing I wanted to mention to you is that you shouldn't be waiting for me to come in and say how things are. You should have a pretty good idea of how they are actually before we come in. Our job, hopefully, is to attest that everything you've received to date is, in fact, accurate. So that's when I'm looking at information that maybe the finance committee should have got. And ask yourself some questions. Are you receiving interim reports? Are those report accurate? How often do you receive them? This little piece where a management narrative is attached, sometimes it's very difficult to just look at numbers and gain an idea of what's actually happening. A little background, like, almost like between-the-lines handwriting to tell you in verbal communication, this is what you're looking at, I think is appropriate if you get those interim reports. And then you want to look at, have there been any, as the year's been going on, and then you get the report, say, come June 30th or sometime in July, have any significant changes occurred between what you had been seeing up to that point in time and after year-end? Okay, quickly. The financial statements are prepared in three stages. There's your UMS accounting system, which details all your assets, all your liabilities as they're recorded on UMS, your revenues and your expenditures. This is for general funds, special revenue funds, capital project funds, agency and trust. And what happens is, we take the UMS budgetary basis of accounting, which is how you manage the town on a day-to-day basis, and basically roll those up into the first, second level of reporting, which is in the report. And that's called the Modified Accrual Basis. The Modified Accrual Basis is one of the things that the agencies look at, because they're looking at your, what is called unassigned fund balance. In the old days, it used to be called unreserved fund balance. And what they want to do is, they want to see how you're managing to maintain and/or increment your unreserved fund balance over time. And they use stats. They might say unreserved fund balance or unassigned fund balance is equal to 10% of your appropriation, or it's equal to 5% or higher. What I can share with you is, when they look at AAA communities, they're looking at 15% to 25% unreserved fund balance. Now, that sounds like a lot of money. But if I said 15% times 365 days, and I can't do the calculation in my head, but I would guess that's about a month and a half worth of working capital. If we said to ourselves, every one of us, is my savings for a month and a half or a month, is that good enough for me to feel comfortable should something happen to me and I lose my job? I think everybody would probably say that's not enough, because it isn't. And so the idea that I'm sharing with you, and I'm not suggesting that, you know, you go for it, but reserves are not necessarily meant to be spent, they're meant to be created. And then the rating companies look at you and determine, are these folks a good investment for bonds that our people want to buy? After we get through the Modified Accrual Basis, I'm going to move on a little bit. Now, let's see, this is where I lost it a little bit. Be with me for a second. After we get through the Modified Accrual Basis, which has some adjustments to it, we bring on something called 60-day receipts, which is something where you can recognize revenues subsequent to year-end. This is where I'm losing the disconnect between your stuff, and I apologize for that. The...there's also an entry that we'll make maybe for short-term interest on your borrowings. And that becomes what's called the Modified Accrual Basis. And in there, you'll show columns which show your general fund. In your case, you have the...let me just one second, if I'll take a quick look. You have the general fund, and you just have a non-major fund. A lot of times, we might see a CPA fund or a major capital project. Like, for instance, when you begin building the new fire safety building, you've got...that's going to be a separate fund on there called a major fund. And what it is, is certain criteria that creates a major fund. So now, we go from the budgetary basis to the Modified Accrual Basis, and then there's the big leap after that. The big leap is what's known as GASB 34. And what it is, is you go from a Modified Accrual Basis, which is primarily cash, to the full accrual basis. And what we do is, we layer on to your Modified Accrual Financial Statements, all your receivables as if they were revenue, all your prepaid's, significant liabilities like long-term debt, the landfill, OPEB. All of those things get added to your financial statement, so that you could be a full accrual basis and essentially be reporting, and I forgot fixed assets, too, and essentially be reporting your financial statements as if you were a private sector entity or a publicly traded company. That's the idea behind that. And that's called a Statement of Activities or Governmental Activities. What it does is, it's showing the reader, and I don't know if you have your financial statements with you, if you wanted, but pages 11, 12, and 13 of the financial statements are your full accrual financial statements. And on there, you will see your capital lease obligations, your landfill, your OPEB liabilities, and your long-term debt. Now, you've got this financial statement in front of you. It's 56 pages long. It's filled with stuff that I personally do like to look at and enjoy and understand, but I'm not going to suggest it's something that you should be fully involved in. So the idea, what I wanted to share with you is, if you pick these things up, what would be the first thing I'd want you to look at, if you were going to say, how did our town do this year? And that would be on page 48 and 49. Page 49 and 49 is called the Budget to Actual Schedule. What this shows is the original budget as you voted it, and it appeared on the recap, any adjustments you made on any special town meetings you might have had, both for revenues and for expenditures. And then it shows the actual budgetary results, which will be your actual revenues and your actual expenditures. And if you're looking at page 48 and 49, on 49, the last column on the right-hand side, it says variance to final budget. And what this means, that in FY13, the town collected $234,000 more than it thought it was going to collect, and spent $328,000 less. Now, that's seven tenths, I think that's six tenths and seven tenths of revenues and seven tenths of expenditures, which means your budget, when you put it together, was 99.3% right. And that's a pretty good grade. What you really do want to see, most of the time, is to have your revenues higher than you budgeted. And the reason is this. There's a tendency, there can be a tendency, to try to drive your appropriation by overinflating your estimated receipts. So what I call, what I would call that bottom-up budgeting, meaning this is what I want to spend, and this is what I have to get, this is telling me you're doing a little bit top-down budgeting, which is saying, this is what I expect to collect, and I have to craft a budget based on those expected collections. The next couple of slides here just talk about revenues, things to look for as it relates to that. This is specifically talking about if there are any deficits, significant deficits in revenues, and that's usually overall. You want to make sure that you don't see those. The surpluses indicate what I call conservative estimates to maintain fiscal prudence, excuse me. Expenditures, there's the budget, the actuals. And what you want to see is, you don't want to see a lot of negatives when you're looking at the expenditures versus the budgeted appropriation. The normal deficits you see will be snow and ice and state and county charges. Other deficits are not so good, because we know with snow and ice, I mean, this year's perfect example, where you can pay it, it's also what they call legal deficit, because it can be raised on the recap in the following year. But you want to make sure that you're not using also a lot of free cash to balance your normal operating budget. Because what that means is, a community who uses a lot of their free cash for, let's say, not one-time expenditures, is building themselves what I call a structural deficit. And to make it simply put, that means that I've got a mortgage to pay, my paycheck doesn't have enough for it, so I have to dip into my savings every month to make my mortgage payment. Eventually, my savings will dry up, and that's what I'm sharing with you here as it relates to free cash, and using that as a funding source on a regular basis. Transfers and note. I like my...that's a good spelling, footnotes. What this is about is, simply put, you do a lot of transfers in and out between stabilization fund, money comes in from your, some of the revolving funds, which is fine. But one of the things I like to look at for transfers is that, if they're going out, are they going out among funds on the governmentals, or are they maybe going out to the enterprise funds or someplace else? Because what that means is, the enterprise funds is being subsidized by the general fund. And you've got to watch out for things like that. And the reason for that is, a lot of times, particularly when you're talking about enterprise funds, is sometimes it's very difficult to charge your users the full freight, what it costs to run that fund. Enterprise funds are supposed to be self-sustaining operations, just like a business. So as a businessman, if I have a company, I either have to have a volume of business or a price structure that allows me to at least keep the lights on and the doors open. And in some cases, with enterprise funds, and your enterprise funds aren't doing that great right now, you know, there could be subsidies that could be, end up going out, which affects the general fund. Because really, what happens is, and DOR does this, and everybody else does it, is when they're looking for the deep pockets to fill anybody who has a deficit, the general fund is usually the area they look at. And that's...I just, I'm kind of sharing that with you, because when I look at transfers in and out, like, for instance, we're talking about the Budget to Actual Schedule, I want to know where that money's going. And if it's going into a stabilization fund, or maybe a capital project, because that can be okay, too, because funding capital assets with current revenues is okay, that makes sense to me. But if it's going into something because something's not making enough money, or there's a deficit, and capital projects can go into a deficit, too, you want to be careful of that. Okay, on the general fund piece, just know that you really want to show positive balances in every single time. You don't want to have a loss in a particular year, because that means you did use free cash. The fund base, generally speaking, the fund-based statements are going to be the same as the budget-to-actual statement, with the exception of that 60-day accrual and a couple of other little quirky things that the GAAP makes us do. When you are opening up the financial statements, and the ones I'm looking, pages I'm looking at right now, just so you know, are pages...pardon me, 14, 15, 16, and 17, they're going to pretty much mirror what you saw on the Budget to Actual Schedule. Now, a change for this year is, you have a stabilization fund. In the past, that stabilization fund used to be separately shown, either in a non-major fund or funded by itself. That is now a component of the general fund. So when you look at your unassigned fund balance of 3.27 million, that includes your stab money, too. And the reason behind that was, is that most of the time, the stabilization fund is funded by the general fund, and the restrictions I want, restrictions that are placed on it by yourselves, not necessarily that it's set aside for a capital project based on a town meeting. And when you leave, when you have it at management's discretion, the GASB, and I think I agree with this one, so just fold it all in, because it makes it easier now to tell Moody's what your unreserved fund balance is, or your unassigned fund balance. Because in the old days, you'd have to sit there and tell, they'd look at the unreserved fund balance, and they'd say, well, wait a second, we've got a million dollars sitting over there in the special revenue fund. And they'd say, where is it? And we'd say, it's in this column. And they'd say, can you break it out in the footnote? We'd say, yeah, we can do that. So now, it's just sitting there, it's in your general fund, and it's part of your overall general fund, unassigned fund balance. If you're going to look at the general fund and on these pages that I'm talking, the things that I would look at is, take a look at your balance sheet and just compare...if you had one in front of you for this year, put a couple of other years beside it, and see how your receivables have been trending, see how your cash has been trending, see how your payables have been trending. And the only reason I mention this is that there was a forensic audit that we actually did for a town out in the western part of the state. We picked up the job, and then somebody else had had it for several years. And we saw this trend where receivables just kept going up and up and up. And in a municipality, receivables should not be going up unless your real estate and personal property tax have just exploded. And even then, most folks, they capture or collect 95% to 96% of their receivables in the year they're committed. What was happening in this case is, the treasurer, collector, was taking cash payments, putting it in her pocket, and not reducing the receivables. And so they just kept escalating. And in the end, it was about $350,000, you know, and this is a small town. So the idea I was just saying is, if you're going to look at things analytically, your balance sheet, you know, just trending it, saying, does this make sense? And by the way, I do that for the Town of Carver. I'm tracking, for the two years we've been here and a little before, I'm tracking your receivables. Because I know you collect 96.4% of your money in the year the commitment goes out, and that's better than the previous year, which is good. All right? But we watch these things. This is the kind of things that we analytically look at and determine if that makes sense. Talked about the stab funds. On your page 14, there's a column in the middle called Non-Major Governmental Funds. And that's what I'm talking about on the slides that come up. We talk about other major, non-major, et cetera. What's in there are your federal grants, your state grants, your revolving funds, some miscellaneous trust funds. That's where all that information goes. Reason it's called non-major, I mean, you can split these out as many times as you want, but the idea behind it is, you want your financial statements not necessarily to provide data, you want it to provide information. And the idea of always having the general fund as a major fund, obviously, that's key. That's how you run this town, it's voted at town meeting, the recap is prepared, et cetera. All these other funds, while having significance to your operations, don't have budgets associated with them. Federal grants, state grants, you get the money, you spend it programmatically, you do some reporting outside, but on a regular basis, if the money dries up, there's no expenditures related to it. And that's why these are put in non-major funds. Enterprise funds, those are shown on page 18 and 19 of the financial statements. You have two. You have North Carver Water District and Cranberry Village. In total, they lost money, $450,000. North Carver Water District is the primary, you know, person, primary entity responsible for it. You know, it's too early for me to know, from my perspective of knowing the town, how significant this is, but when we're talking about some of those transfers that are going to be coming back and forth, there was a small transfer in of $38,000 in FY13. Not enough to take care of all the expenses related to it, but still, it's, there's a transfer in. Now, the loss of $459,000 is impacted by what we call a non-cash expense called depreciation. And what that means is, that you have a capital asset that's being depreciated over the life of its capital ass, of its useful life, which can be anywhere from five to 25 years. It's a non-cash expense, and so that probably would drop the loss down to about $280,000. The $280,000 is the real cash loss for the, for North Carver Water District last year. But with, as it relates to enterprise funds, these are also budgeted funds, they appear on the recap, and this is something that you do have a chance to control. The only problem with it is, if I, if you wanted to know how your enterprise fund was really doing, I would suggest you do not look at these financial statements, because it includes capital assets, it includes all the long-term debt, all the full accrual stuff, which is perfectly sensible for GAAP-based financial statements, but it's not what's really running through the books under UMS. So if you asked, if you asked the town accountant, what is the fund balance of the North Carver Water District, it's not going to look anything like the $2.3 million you see on this financial statement.
Can I just put out one thing? You said that it lost 450,000.
459.
Yeah, 459, but Cranberry Village actually made almost a $10,000 profit.
It broke even at 9,500. Yep.
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 On $77,000 worth of...
Right.
They had a pretty good return in the money that they paid in.
Yeah, North Carver's where the herd is right now. So if you want to know, what I'm going to advise you, if you want to know how the enterprise funds are doing, talk to Meg, because that's the only way you're really going to understand it. Well, these financial statements, again, are compliant, but they're so, I understand them, I could back out everything and come to a number, but I'm not suggesting you do the same. Just ask her if you want to know how the operations are doing, what the revenue is for the year, what the fund balance is for the year. Okay, so what I've tried to do through this, and I'm not getting into any of the notes, I'm not getting into any of the guts of this thing. There are extensive disclosures on your OPEB, extensive disclosures on your long-term debt, your capital leases, cash, all these things. What you should know is that they're all compliant. There's, we are at GASB 68 right now, and when I first started in this business was GASB 4, so things have been changing quite a bit. But you've got a financial statements that do make sense to the folks who it's important for you to, who's looking at this. And primarily, it's going to be the rating agencies, all right? Did you go to double, just AA, is that what you did? That's great. So, and the other thing that I wanted to share with you, and I'll get a little bit into it when I talk about how I think Carver did this year, is pay attention, if you would, to the thing that I like to look at, and that's page 14. Page 14, on the bottom, under the classification of fund balances, that unassigned fund balance of 3.27 million, that's a number that these folks look at, and they scrutinize very well. The other thing that they're going to ask you, always ask questions about, is what's your plan for some of these contingent and visible liabilities, these long-term liabilities? Talk about OPEB, just for... Talk about OPEB just for a bit.
Jim, the, um,
Dick.
I'm sorry, Dick. The, um, the other, the unassigned piece of 3.2 million dollars, that's where you were talking about, the 15%?
Yep, yep.
That was bonding, reading, you just look for.
It's, right now, you are at 11.35%. Your stab fund is, um, 2.96, and your regular, let's call it, uh, yeah, is nine point, I'm sorry, your regular unreserved fund balance is 6.99, stab fund is 9.6. So you're just underneath at 11.35, which is pretty good. I mean, I think, and it's been a trend, because I've got you going back to 2010, and, um, you were at 6.8% in 2010, 7.2, 9.7, 11.3. So that's a, that's a good trend, which I guarantee you contributed to you getting a better rating.
Do you, do you OPEB liabilities on in here yet?
Yeah, it is. We're showing it on, on, on the full accrual financial statements.
Okay.
It's on page 11, and that number is, glasses, 15.8 million dollars.
That's why the unrestricted is a negative balance?
It's under non-current liabilities, and it's 15.857 million dollars. Now, please understand that that's not the liability of the OPEB. That's how much you should have put in the bank, and have invested somewhere to date. It's a big number.
I've been looking for that bank account, I can't find it.
There's a lot of folks, and just talking about that, you're in the same group of, you know, probably 80%, maybe 85% of the communities out there, certainly 85% of our, more than 85, probably 90% of our clients. And, um, there's only a handful out there who are truly being able to address this with some significance. Um, that comes to mind is Brookline, Wellesley, Arlington. Um, I know I'm missing a couple, but they've, they've had, they've been working on this. I mean, Wellesley got the benefit of, at one point in time, having a fully funded pension plan. And they took the appropriation, they put it against OPEB. Um, the stock market changed that a little bit for them, but that was an opportunity they had. Brookline, they've just had some policies, and they have a, the demographics of their tax base are terrific. And, um, they've got, they're almost meeting right now. But that's the handful. Um, what I think is going to happen, and you may have already discussed this with, you know, was it S&amp;P that did the rating for you? Okay, um, that you're going to find yourself, and they're going to say, "What's your plan? What do you intend to do?" And some people are doing, I call them symbolic, they're putting a couple hundred thousand away each year, which, excuse the expression, but it's like a pimple on the back of an elephant. But it's, it's something they're doing, and it's something that they're building into, structurally into their process, because you know how the budget works, it's 200, then it's 250, then it's 300. They're doing that. Um, some folks are not doing a thing. And eventually, what's going to happen is, there's going to be enough activity where things are happening, there is positive attempts by communities out there to deal with OPEB, that the ones that don't are going to suffer. And I don't know when that timeframe is, but I'm going to guess it's in five years. That would be my guess.
And that's your bond rating that would suffer, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, the fact that you've got an uptick, I don't know how many basis points it saved, but I bet you saved three basis points. You know, and depending on the size of the borrowing, that's a significant sum of money.
But going back the other way for not addressing the problem. You know, a few years ago, we actually had set up an account, and we were going to put the reimbursements from Part D from Medicare reimbursement, you know, but we never did anything. So, you know, at least that would have been an indication that we were trying to do something.
It's a start, it's a start. Like, I, we have a community out there that's actually just did 50,000. You know, but they, they're now, um, that was two years ago, and now they're doing 250. And again, it's so far below what their arc is, but that's, it's a process, they're dealing with it. And of course, um, you know, some folks have pension plans that are 75, 85% funded. And they're planning, and they didn't go out to 2040-something to their retirement pension payments, they're going to be able to begin transferring that appropriation within 10 to eight years to their OPEB. Um, and then again, too, there's design changes. I mean, every time there's a design change, in terms of who you're having, doing your insurance with, what the, how the plan is laid out, and the benefits associated with it, that increments or decreases the amount of the OPEB liability. So there's a lot of dynamics here.
Back seven or eight years ago, the town went and formed its own insurance group, and they eliminated the indemnity plan, and they saved between a half a million and 750,000, and plowed it all into the budget.
We had a lot of clients do that, and they took that difference and they put it someplace else. They didn't put it towards the budget itself. So, let me see.
I think you were on page 14.
All right.
You like to look at.
Page 14?
Yeah. We just talked.
What about page 14?
Um, you were saying this is where you like to look, and then we got off on.
Okay, let me come back. What I was going to actually do is kind of wrap up this piece of it. Um, the management letter, I can incorporate when we talk about this. Uh, but if this, if I missed anything that you thought you wanted to hear, or I should have addressed, before we get into these guys, you know, the actual numbers themselves, I'd be more than happy to try to address that at the moment.
Um, I'd like you to talk about the unassigned fund balance, and what makes up that 3.2 million dollars?
3.2 million dollars. Let's show you exactly where it is. If you looked at page, I'm not really a page flipper, but this one's good. If you looked at page 41, that 3.2 million dollars, 2.7 million dollars, has $973,000 of your stab fund in there, including the, which is another 181. So what you have is unreserved fund balance, your general stabilization, and your capital stabilization, all rolled up into that 3.27 million. The other numbers that are shown are basically encumbrances and continuing appropriations. The encumbrances are known as assigned, and the continuing appropriations are shown as committed.
Can Meg explain this to us some other time, if we had her in here?
Absolutely, and I'd be more than happy to come back if we wanted to do that, too.
It's a lot to absorb.
Yep, oh yeah, I kind of, this is, this, this presentation at one point in time was, took over an hour and a half to present. And I've, I've tried to color it down as much as I can. Uh, because there's a lot, there's a lot in here, that, like I said, I kind of enjoy this stuff. Crazy enough, I've been doing it for 23 years, but, um, it's, uh, it can, it can make your eyes glaze over a little bit. All right, what I'd like to do now is just shift a little bit of gears, it kind of pulls into what we just talked about. And I just want to talk about how the audit went. And the way I usually do this is to give you an idea of what we did, um, what we tested, my impression of how the audit went, both from a business perspective, as well as your auditor, and then share with you some, uh, some thoughts that I think are worth, you should know about, in terms of what's in those.
What slide number are you on?
I'm not on a slide, this is not, there's no slide on this one.
Okay.
So, Haley was the lead member of the senior in the audit team, we had Dan out here too, and myself. And we break the audit up into two phases. We do some work in the spring for a week, and then we come out for two weeks after year-end. In this case, it was the week beginning 11, November 4th. Now, the reason we break it up is, there's certain things that can be done that aren't date-specific, meaning they're not applicable, necessarily applicable to June 30th. And we also like to spread out the work, because trying to get it all done after year-end is both difficult for your people, and difficult for us. So when we come out in the spring, we look at the budget, because it's been around for more than 12 months. Um, we look at long-term debt, because a lot of times, that's already been taken care of. We do, uh, tests of controls, we look at your revenue cycle, your expenditure cycle, and your payroll cycle, and we do about 30 to 40 selections of those, testing internal controls and the design of them. Uh, we do the single audit, which is the federal awards report. I think he spent about 1.5 million dollars last year. And that's, we have to look at that, special education is usually one of the ones we pick to audit, and I think there was another one, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. So we do all that in that one week. Then we come back in November, we've got the trial balance from Meg, we've loaded it into our software, that thing I was talking about going from the UMS, to the modified accrual, to the full accrual, we've got a system that rolls all that up into the Excel files, and into the financial statements themselves. And then, what we really do is, we walk down the balance sheet. We look at your cash, your receivables, your capital assets. Town had almost $10 million worth of cash at the end of last year. You had almost $5 million worth of receivables. Your capital assets were 32 million for, I'm sorry, 27 million for the town, and $5 million for the enterprise fund. Those are the big assets that we look at, and cash is something we nail really hard, because it's liquid, it's the one that can move, has the most legs, it can move the fastest. And we're very comfortable with the numbers that were given to us, and what we audited. And then you have basically four liabilities that stand out on the balance sheet. Your landfill, your OPEB, something called compensated absences, which is accrued sick and vacation time, and then your long-term debt. The OPEB, I think I mentioned earlier, was 15.9 million dollars, which is a $3 million increase from the prior year. And you don't have much debt from the town side, you only have $1.9 million. The enterprise funds have 4.9 million dollars. Now, I know that's going to change, but, um, debt service, as it relates to your overall budget, is significantly low in comparison to other communities. Talked about the testing, so the deliverables, when I look at it, we ended our fieldwork on November 15th. Um, we had to wait from the engineer to get updated landfill information, so we actually had the financials all done, but we had to wait to get that, that didn't come till January. The drafts went out in February, and the finals were done 10 days later, on February 13th.
Is the situation with the landfill in good shape, or it isn't?
It's fine.
That's what I thought.
What we needed, though, um, we just needed to have an outside confirmation of what that liability could be. It looked reasonable in comparison to the prior years, based on the questions we asked. Noted that there had not been any significant changes, and let's call it the environment, but we have to get something from the outside in order for us to opine on it.
Well, there's like pumping stations that clean that, and how long will that run for?
Oh, I don't know. Well, we're estimating, the liability for, um, for that is going to cost the town, what did I say, 1.4 million dollars, or whatever that life is.
It's over a time period.
It's over a time period.
Each time we appropriate, what is it, 35,000 or something?
Yeah.
Or 50,000?
And that, and that what we do is, we offset that against the liability, but then we get an update from the engineer, who tells us, based on new technology, changes, whatever they might be environmentally, if that liability is correctly stated or not. And I think it pretty much stayed the same, to be honest with you. I can't remember what 2012 was, but it didn't, it didn't increment or decrease much at all. Um, so, bottom line, that unmodified opinion I was talking about, that's what you got, which is good. Um, from a perspective as your auditor, and what you think your financial team is doing, uh, we were very happy with the information received, the accuracy of it, and the timeliness of it. One of the things we try to do is, we come in and we ask a question, and we look for the response, the timing of the response, how quickly the information comes to us, and then when we get it, how accurate it was. It had very good response times. Uh, it wasn't, I felt like that the, uh, the audit, the folks we were auditing had a real good handle on the information they're responsible for, and I just wanted to pass that on to you. And, um, the management letter is there, but what I can share with you, no internal control issues, no material weaknesses, and no significant deficiencies, which is what you want your auditor to tell you. Um, just a couple of highlights. On the general fund, um, we mentioned the excesses of revenue, the excesses of, uh, the underpayment, underspent appropriation, little bit of collections. When it all netted out, you came up with a $196,000 surplus. Which, when we talked about six tenths of 1%, that's how good your budget was put together. Um, overall, your operations, I think, are structurally sound, but as tight as a nail, they're very, very tight. Um, you know, when you get revenues just coming in a little bit over, and we talked about expenditures, I still like the fact that you were able to increase your fund balance to 3.3 million dollars. Um, your unreserved fund balance was 2.3, and the stabilization being 9.74. Um, that's good, that's good stuff, and I was very happy to see that. Um, as we talked about, water operations lost money in total. The Cranberry Village made a small profit, I call that break-even, basically, and, um, the Water District.
The only reason I brought that up, it's one group, it's one community, Mobile Home Park, and they use all the, all the water. You know, and, you know, we know the elderly are struggling nowadays, so I look at it as being, you know, a pat in the back for them, for what they're doing down there.
I wasn't aware of that, thank you.
You know, and, you know, we've subsidized the Carver Water District tremendously, and you even show it right here.
Yep.
And we haven't had to subsidize them at all.
Right, right. Um, capital asset activity, it was minimal, actually, um, from what we call, there's general government and enterprise fund. On the general government side, you bought 1.4 million dollars worth of capital assets. Um, the big guys, I got three of them. Samantha Lane was purchased for a little over 200K. Um, you had infrastructure, probably mostly funded by Chapter 90 money, of 540,000. And then you also entered into some capital leases for some buses. And I think there was, uh, maybe a police vehicle in there too, or you purchased it, oh right, I can't remember. And that was about 445,000, there's two of them, yep. It was four buses, I think.
You said we bought Samantha Lane for?
That's what I got, a Samantha Lane purchase.
Because I remember we bought a little piece of Samantha Lane, it was at the end of the road, but I don't remember buying, spending that kind of money.
That's what, that's what your fixed assets say.
Well, you'll have to check into that.
Um, on the debt side, there was no new issuances, just the servicing of it?
Can I, um, just go back to the capital leases?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on, on what you saw with capital leases here?
Your interest rate you're paying is over 4%. I think the market's more competitive with other types of financing, at least that's what I've seen. Even with rollover bands, I've seen bands at under 1%.
Yes.
I've seen long-term debt under 3. So my thought process is, in fact, I think I made a comment or recommendation, consider looking at other terms, other ways of financing versus just going with the capital leases. Um, I don't know if regular bonds can go five years, because that's where your leases normally are, but I think state house, state house notes can.
Yep.
And there might be another, other vehicles for you to use. So, it's all about the cost of the money, when it comes to that. If it was less cost, I'd say go for it, because it's really, it's just a form of financing. But if you can save yourself, you know, 100 basis points, um, why not?
So basically, you're talking purchase versus lease?
Well, actually, no, these are, you're actually purchasing.
Yeah.
When you say it's a capital lease, at the end of the lease, you own the asset.
Yep.
Okay, what I'm saying is, that it's a financing mechanism the town has preferred to use for the past several years, it looks like, is using leases. And I'm suggesting that, at least, explore the opportunity of having normal, like a note of some sort, because you could save yourself some money on the interest rate.
We originally get into that, because what was happening is, as we were paying the debt off, it was being absorbed into the operating budget. That's how we get into the short-term leases, and it was meant to be a short-term solution, it became long-term.
I don't want to digress too much, but one of the things that I think a good capital improvement plan does is it sets a tone and say, "We want to maintain a debt service, a capital expenditure level, which includes debt service, at X percent of budget." Now, that can be purchasing assets from current revenues, and also debt payments. You combine the two and say, let's say it's 5%. And the minute you see that ladder, that out-year ladder going down, where you're going to be below 5%, identify something on your capital improvement plan, pick up a way to fund it, and get it back up to that level. And what that does is, it keeps both your vertical assets and your, and your infrastructure assets from deteriorating too far. You've got a constant layering of debt, so that you can anticipate, "I am going to spend", I'm using the example, 5% of my budget every year, in capital nature. That, to me, is a good long-term plan.
And isn't it a little bit deceiving that that's not on the debt schedule, the capital leases? Because it's really like a part of the, of the budget of the department.
It's not on your internal debt schedule, but it is, it's shown as a liability on the financial statements. And we have a full footnote just on capital leases. Um, let's see. That's it, that's what that, actually, that takes me to the end of what I call the financial statements. Um, real quickly, I'll just talk about the federal awards. Um, you did spend 1.5 million dollars on federal awards. We tasted, tested 54% of that, or 812,000, um, relative to the community development program, and also the special education program. Um, in the report are three unmodified opinions, which means there were no question costs, no findings. In essence, it was a clean report. And honestly, we don't need to spend any more time on that guy right there. Um, the management letter is the final product. Now, this is the one that we probably own, when I say, it's owned by the auditing firm. And we look at this in two different ways. One is, we revisit comments that existed in the prior year, to see if they've been resolved. Um, then we look, hopefully, we, if we see some things that we think we should introduce in the current year, we do that. And then sometimes, there's some things that we call informational comments. They're not- They're not necessarily a negative for the town, but they're something that maybe the town should think about. So we broke this years up like that. Now, before you get, you know, when you pick up this thing, it's critical in nature. There's not one thing in here we're not saying shouldn't be better, when you really get down to it. We're in the business of negative assurance. That's why we say, in our opinion, we didn't see anything that was bad, in essence. What I, what this doesn't do is talk about the strengths that I think are in the system. So I'd just like to put that in perspective before we begin talking about it. But I'm pretty happy to report that there were five comments from the prior years. We talked about reconciliations. We talked about timely financial reporting, reviewer controls, formalizing cash and investment policies, and then a fraud risk assessment. Two of these were fully resolved right off the bat. And the other three are, I believe, will probably have a significant, if not full resolution, as part of FY fourteen. Because some of these, you know, there was personnel changes in both the major operations of your finances department. And as a result, some of these things have to go into FY fourteen. But, you know, the reconciliation of the key asset accounts and the timely reporting of financial activity, that, those are the two that we consider to be fully resolved. And I think that's a plus. We had four new comments that we wanted to introduce. One relative to police detail receivables and just making sure the reconciliation's being done between the ledger and the police. I mentioned, I put a comment in there regarding leasing versus long-term, versus long-term debt. There was a little mechanism in the treasurer's office where the funding of the payroll was done a little differently than we thought it should be done. So we made a recommendation to enhance that. She's embraced that. And then also, as part of our payroll testing, we saw some, the I-9 documentation wasn't all there. And we just wanted to highlight that for you. We're paying attention to this stuff a little bit because, just so you know, I've had three clients get audited by the IRS relative to I-9s, relative to employee classification and relative to ten ninety-nines being issued. It's, they're getting serious. I, I thought you guys were like brothers and sisters and they're not treating you like that right now. Then there's the informational comments. I think we had three. Just making you aware of some new Gatsby's coming down the road. Talked about OPEB quite extensively and what that's been doing to your balance sheet. They're going to do the same thing with your pensions. You know, right now, you're part of the Plymouth County retirement system. And that liability in total, unfunded liability, is six hundred and fifty-three million dollars. The town owns, I think, two point seven percent of that. And that number to you is seventeen point six million dollars. In FY fifteen, most of that month, that number is going to be sitting on your balance sheet, just like the OPEB liability has been.
In essence, all we're doing is paying virtually just like an interest on a mortgage. We're not paying any principal against it.
Well, the bad...
And that's what we should be doing.
Bad part about the retirement, your retirement system right now is only fifty percent funded. You know, that's not a good number. I mean, I, I know communities that have less funding and I know communities who are in the seventies and eighties. So you're playing catch-up and I actually didn't pay attention.
If I put more money aside, other than what the assessment is, we could start to bring that number down.
Yeah, but I don't know if you can do, I don't know if they would apply it to just to your account.
They would. I've talked to the executive director.
It's a thought. I mean, you know, that's a thought. It's an option.
They'll give us, yeah.
You know? I mean, the thing I would say to you is if you're making your ARC in total, and I'm sure that they probably elected to do an extended funding schedule, you're probably okay. You're probably okay. I'm not necessarily saying don't do it, but if you were going to do something with extra money or an OPEB.
OPEB.
Yeah. Because you control that.
Well, the OPEB account we set up, you can put money in, but you can't take it out.
That's, that's the way it works. You can set money as...
Like a piggy bank that won't break.
No, but you can set money aside, not in the trust. And what they, what that means is that you use, when the actuary comes in and sees that you've put it aside, but it hasn't been put into a trust, meaning you can never get it back. What they do is they'll use a lower discount rate in terms of calculating what the unfunded liability is. And it doesn't take away from the fact that management has put something aside. It's just that, what it's saying is management has put something aside, but might want it back. And so you don't get to use the higher rate of return on your investment.
We did a thought. So we couldn't dip back. It's where to get it, you know?
That's, that's the way the trusts work. It's just like paying the pension, you know? The money that's in the pension fund can't be used for the creditors of the town. There's a new law that was passed in July of two thousand thirteen that allows you to begin reserving funds for compensated absences. That's just an information thing offered for consideration. Your liability was a little over a million dollars at the end of last year. And it's saying, you know, if you're in the process of setting up reserves, it's an option.
And what people have to understand, especially the selectmen and the school board, is the contracts that they're negotiating that they're giving these benefits for, that's what's driving that up.
Sick pay buyback and, you know, vacation's vacation, but it's mostly...
I thought you could set up a fund and actually put money away in it.
That's what this is about. You never used to be able to do it before.
Yeah.
You could not, like, it's almost like advanced funding a salary and DOR said you couldn't do it. Now they say you can.
Because what we're doing now is it's just pay as you go.
Right.
Someone's going to retire.
If somebody's going to retire, you usually have a hole in your budget and, you know, use that money to pay it off and then replenish it or it actually just goes away. You never know. And then we just said, get an actuarial evaluation. You need a new one. So that adverse opinion I was talking about earlier doesn't come to fruition. On a final note, just from an engagement standpoint, you know, I'm a businessman. And after I act as your auditor, which means I got to have my professional skepticism and I got to do the work I'm supposed to do, sometimes deliver good messages, sometimes deliver bad. It was a pleasure working with you people. They treat our people good. And I was very, very pleased with the approach, not only of my team, but obviously of your team too.
Well, I'd like to say that, you know, we've never had the auditor come before us. And I've never seen them come before us before, so. Last year was the first year you came before us and this year's a great improvement over last year. Not that you did a bad job last year, but just having this thing here...
Yeah, I wish I could have coordinated the information a little better. I kind of screwed it up, but...
We can re...
We got the gist of it, yeah. So, questions, comments? I'm more than happy.
Dick, any other observations that you didn't put into the documents? That as Carver goes through, we just developed some financial management policies that the Board of Selectmen adopted and we're moving those to the school committee, the finance committee and hopefully town meeting. Where do, what would your recommendations be on some action items the town should focus on in order to improve our overall business operations, if you will?
I haven't had a chance to see the new policies you put up. But one of the things I know I like, it makes sense, it helps drive the budgetary decisions you have to make, is to establish guidelines for fund balance amounts and percentages as a percentage of your appropriation. Like, we were talking about triple As. You guys are now over eleven percent, which I think is terrific. You know, goals that are established, we do not want to be below a certain amount, I think are important. Doesn't mean you can't dip underneath them, but there's whole, the whole idea of how are we going to get it back to where it needs to be.
So we set five percent for general stabilization and ten percent for all capital projects?
That's terrific. That, that makes sense to me. That makes sense. The other things that I like to see is, I mentioned the capital improvement plan. I'm not sure, I can't remember seeing one, if the town has one. Knowing what your vulnerabilities are, both short-term and long-term, and having a plan that layers these things out, you know, it could be called the wishlist if you want. And then having an idea of when and how it can be funded is important. Your debt service right now is, excuse me, Wally, I hope I have it.
One point nine million?
One, no, but debt service as a percent of your budget is one point two-two percent.
It's low.
That's very low. That's not, that's like not having debt. And the only reason I highlight that, it doesn't necessarily...
And that's not good, though.
No, well, the reason it could not be good is because some of your assets could be deteriorating beyond where they need to be. And replacing them or renovating them or whatever is a big part of what drives me evaluating a percentage of debt service as a part of your budget. So if you only have that much debt service going to your budget, that means ninety-eight percent of your budget is for operational type of stuff. And some, some things, I'm not predicting it, but it indicates a potential that you structurally, both like I call vertical assets and infrastructure, you could be at a point in time where all of a sudden you're going to need something big and it's going to have to be done fast. And then all of a sudden, that thing spikes. The idea that I like to say is, you know, if we say we leveled that at five percent, you know, increment it over a period of time, just don't have it happen in one year. That's the big key.
And you're right about spiking. We've got a new fire station. We've got a new elementary school. And we need to do something with the police station. So there's three vertical structures in town that either need to be rehabbed or rebuilt.
And the high school is twenty-nine years old.
And that too.
Just went through that, seventy-three million dollars.
Any other questions? I had one, but I, I was going to hit Megan up on it, Meg on it tomorrow or something. It's not, it's not a big...
Oh, okay. We're going to bring Meg in here and beat her up next, the next meeting.
And actually, let me ask Meg and Paula, if you guys have any questions you want to ask Dick? Any comments you want to, you have? The staff all met when we had the draft report on February thirteenth.
Third.
Okay. And we went over the whole document and, you know, we were pleased with the results of that.
I just have one simple question. The town really isn't that, that bad a shape, is it?
I have to ask your permission to answer that if you want me to. Okay. No, it's doing all right. It's doing all right.
But that should be a yes and a no because we're really...
Well...
Need a lot more debt to improve our infrastructure.
The idea behind this is that, don't forget, June thirtieth is a picture in time. I already, one of the things I emphasize and I will reemphasize is that your budget came in almost exactly where you thought it would be. You were ninety-nine point three percent of revenues and ninety-nine point four percent of expenditures. There was little, there's little wiggle room in any way, shape or form. So the idea that, what this means to me is that you're managing your process, but there's not a lot of extra money rolling around here.
No.
You know? And the fact that you've been able to get your reserves up to what I consider to be a healthier point in time on a balance sheet basis, that's great. But the idea going forward is to make sure that you can maintain that number. That's what, that's what they're looking at. I know that you got the uptick because of the trend. The trend showed you being able to increase your reserves. And the ability to do that over a period of the four years that I have mapped out here is why you are now at straight double A. I mean, I'm glad I'm not on your side of the desk when it comes to the budget time.
Through you, Mr. Chair. And what happens when the, when the Gatsby changes and we have to put that seventeen point whatever million on the books for OPEB? I mean, when you say we're in great shape, shouldn't we be a little concerned about what's coming in the next year?
When I was saying you were in great shape, I was talking about, like, all you miss accounting. When that seventeen point six million dollars is, I don't think is going to negatively affect your bond rating because you have to understand every other community is going to have that on there. What's happening with the way the reporting is going is it's drawing attention to these liabilities that weren't on the books. They were kind of just hanging out there. You knew about them because you did a pay-as-you-go basis. And the Gatsby's saying, these things belong on your financial statements. Somebody ought to pick that up and not have to look, you know, in a sixty-three page document at page fifty-eight to see what the retirement system liability is. And that's what you had to do now. So they're saying, let's get that on there. And they're going to do, they're doing the same thing with OPEB right now, but eventually they're going to have the whole OPEB thing on there too.
You know, years ago, and I don't know if it's called anymore, but that was like off-balance-sheet finance.
That's exactly...
Because they're negotiating contracts, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen, that's building these liabilities out there that's having impact on us yet. But they're going to impact us. So they're going to be really careful about what they're negotiating.
And that's why I said I'm glad I'm on this side of the table because it's, it's a tough, there's a lot of things that have to be done and dealt with.
Now, will the North Carver Water District continuing deficit eventually hurt us from our bond rating? Or will that not impact it either?
I don't know from a bond rating standpoint, but DOR could be coming after you and looking at that and reducing your free cash calculation because of, if it results in a significant deficit.
We, our, our town administrator already guided us through an OPEB study committee. We just started that process. I mean, we did it last meeting, so we're, we're started.
It's a start, it's a plan.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Dick.
Thanks for your time.
Mr. Chair, want to take a two-minute recess?
Sure. Two-minute recess. Okay, folks, I'm trying to speed this up a little bit. Mr. Melonowski, town administrator update?
I will jump into fourth gear. Monthly financial updates. In meeting with the finance team, what I'd like to do is, at our second meeting of the month, is plan on doing a financial update as to where we are year-to-date and any other issues that are outstanding. Our goal is to start to actually have a one-page narrative for you, as you've heard in the presentation this evening, versus trying to give, you know, eighty pages of documents to look through, which, you know, we can do that too, but just trying to streamline that. One of the things that I do want to bring up is our snow and ice. You know, continues to grow at an exorbitant rate. Although it is a public safety issue and we have to deal with it, we're now up over two hundred thousand dollars. And probably after the storms this week, once those are all put into the books, probably over a quarter million dollars in additional snow and ice cost. Moving forward for the FY fifteen budget, as I mentioned, my goal is to have that in front of the selectmen as a draft budget on March twenty-fifth, which then, in working with the finance committee, we would probably look to have the March twenty-ninth or the April fifth as their Saturday meeting to go over all the budgets, depending on how they want to do it. Warrant articles, we've extended that to March eleventh and we'd like to have those in by four P.M. And also at the March eleventh date, I think we should really take some time and schedule when we're going to have the annual town meeting and pick a date for that. Next item I have is operational efficiencies with contract and signing warrants. One of the things that I'd like to do or for you to consider, and not to vote on it tonight, but figure out if, right now, when we have expenditures, warrants, contracts, it takes three selectmen to come in and sign those. And, you know, with everyone's work schedule and so forth and some of the conflicts we have, it's sometimes a challenge for us to always have, get three people in. And I'd like you to consider trying to figure out how you can streamline that policy, whether you designate one person to do that from the board and then, you know, make sure all the members have the availability, looking at the information, but not to slow down the, the payment process. That's what we're trying to do because as we get into procurement, as we go forward, and that's not going to happen before annual town meeting, but we need to do a lot more on procurement. Some of the things that we can negotiate with vendors is early payment. So if we get a bill and we actually pay that within seven to ten days, then they may give us a small credit on there versus waiting forty-five days to pay. And we need to figure out how to make sure that that happens. So again, it's more food for thought at this point. The North Carver Water District, there have been multiple meetings over the last month and a half that I've been here, meeting with staff and also with the commissioners and also the financial analysts. Tomorrow, there is going to be an additional public meeting. There is, I'm sorry, I thought someone was asking me a question. There is going to be a public meeting tomorrow night with the North Carver Water District to address several items. One is that we want to take a look at what the financial projections were when the project was approved. So let's, let's figure out where we were and what the assumptions were. And this is all about assumptions. We have detailed pages of the spreadsheets that show what all the numbers add up to and we put it into the calculator, if you will, and it gives us what our, how it's going to take you know, within thirteen years before we break even based upon the assumptions that are there. But what the key point is, is the assumptions. And the assumptions, you know, can be as to how fast development's going to occur, what's just going to impact the water usage, which then impacts the amount of money you can collect to pay off some of the bills. So again, we want to go over that item that's there. In addition to expand the, the site or the capacity is we're going to have to also have to spend some money. is we're going to have to also have to spend some money on the project to build some additional water storage capacity, to put in another forty thousand gallons of capacity. Even though the, the pumping facility could pump a million gallons, we're only permitted to pump a hundred thousand gallons. And the problem is we don't have enough storage capacity. So when you have a peak period of time, that hundred thousand gallons is over a twenty-four period, so it's a straw in the ground. And there are times when we need to draw out water faster than that straw will allow us to do. The way around that is in the, you know, in the, in the A, early A.M. hours, you know, midnight to six A.M., is you're actually pumping water out at a constant rate, filling a reservoir and being able to, to draw that down during your peak period of time. So there is gonna have to be some additional investment that the town is going to need to make for that.
Is it the general fund that's gonna have to make that investment?
Well, that's to be determined. But there is gonna have to be some investment. And again, we're looking that the project, whether it's general fund or other fund revenues, is going to have to be subsidized, you know, right now we're looking at thirteen years. And again, what's key right now is that staff has been working on the assumptions, working on the numbers. We're gonna have to have another meeting after tomorrow night to really finalize everything, but kinda look at this as a two-step process. Tomorrow is, is key to understand what, where we were, what the additional needs are and what the assumptions are. And then based upon everyone agreeing on the assumptions and how conservative or liberal we wanna be on growth there, impacts whether it's ten years that we have to subsidize it or fifteen years to subsidize it. Right now, we're at thirteen.
You don't, you don't wanna see where we started off. It's radically different.
And.
I'll address that tomorrow night.
What I'm, what I'm looking at also is that we're looking right now, based upon the projections, of a deficit of, of a hundred and forty thousand dollars that'll have to be built into the FY fifteen budget. I've already mentioned that figure to you. What I put in the agenda here is that that item is something that we, we need to have the capital outlay committee take a look at. What you'll find is tomorrow is that the operations of the, the district, the operational costs are covered by the revenue that's coming in. So we can operate the plant and we're showing a little bit of profit. Unfortunately, our debt is so large that we can't, cannot sustain paying for that, that, that debt service. Hence, this may be more of a capital outlay component that needs to do. Now, that's gonna impact everything else in the town as to the number of vehicles we can borrow or generators or whatever it may be. But it is a capital deficit that we have that's paying for the debt service. So we'll be talking more to the capital outlay committee with that. Moving on, any questions on that? Moving on, the Borrego Solar Project. Last, I think it was Thursday, the developers submitted the revised building plans to the building inspector. Those are a thirty-two percent reduction based upon what they submitted at the planning board. That was reviewed by the building inspector. I also reviewed it last week and the building inspector has signed off on that set of plans. We didn't release the plans until yesterday. Waiting just for the director of planning to come in and do a third check to make sure it was consistent with the planning vote.
Has the Bennett appealed?
So those have been sent off and also when, yesterday I notified several of the butters that the plans have been submitted and the permit has been issued, which starts the, their, their appeal clock if they so choose to appeal.
That's what my question was.
Through you, Mr. Chair, can I just ask you a couple of questions, Mike, on this? Only because there is a resident in that neighborhood who is a Merchant Marine and he was unavailable to be around for a lot of it. And where he has come into the process of learning is about the building inspector signing off. And he was told, and I just wanna know if you can clarify two questions, that the plans that the building inspector reviewed were different than what the planning department were reviewing. You don't know that answer, if you could double-check on that? There was a little bit of, and the second question that he had, which still remains with a lot of the residents, is the whole point of the ZBA appealing this project was for safety, health, and wellness. And the big concern out there, if you can shed any light on it, is what does reducing the project by thirty-two percent gonna take away from the safety, health, and wellness? It's still gonna be out there.
Sure, let me address both those questions.
Thank you.
The building inspector, to his credit, did receive a couple of different versions of the plans immediately after the planning board approved the project. When he went through that with a fine-tooth comb and credit needs to go to him, he identified that there were some discrepancies in the plan. He alerted me to that and, and some others. And we had a conference call with Borrego and stated that, you know, what you had submitted to the planning board is not consistent with what the building inspector has. They have an engineering division, they have a land use division, and, and the net of this is that they went back and revised all the plans and so that the building inspector, the final set that he received last week is consistent one-hundred percent with what the planning board received.
Thank you.
To your second question, the project was refined by the thirty-two percent reduction. It did add additional, an additional berm into the property with some plannings on top of that and also included the setback on one side of the site. As it relates to the, to the, the health, safety, and welfare issue, prior to the town adopting its solar panel zoning bylaw, there was no requirement in the town or no specification as to what Carver will accept. Now that that has been passed, Carver has to find what is, is safe for human health and welfare. So by the passage of that, the town now has to find what it believes is acceptable to put into Carver based upon the parameters of the zoning bylaws. So Carver has not said that, you know, solar panels are not health, you know, they'll meet those requirements, they've said they do if it falls into the specification. And so that's about as much as I can say on that at this point. So that Carver has established what is acceptable.
At this point, but because it was prior.
Correct.
Mike, and how much does that comply, how much does the plan, the scaled-back plan?
I think it, and actually.
Fall into that bylaw?
No, it's a good point, I'm glad you're bringing that up because I, I believe it, and I know I said at the last meeting that it, it met at a hundred percent. It doesn't meet at a hundred percent. I believe there's ones, one or two side setbacks where although there's houses a long ways away, it doesn't meet the two-hundred-foot setback, but there's no buildings within close proximity to that.
So no.
So there are a couple of minor things that it, that it doesn't meet and recognizing that those are major things for the residents there, but in the realm of permitting, it would be considered minor issues.
But just for the record, in, in terms of defending the residents, the ZBA appealed this decision based on the same information you're giving us, that this all happened prior to. So it's, it's still a little disconcerting for the residents and for a lot, a lot of us that there's nothing, there's nothing more that we can do at this point, so. Because the ZBA had made their decision based on the law, you know, the, the bylaw being accepted after the fact, that this had all happened before. So why did the ZBA then appeal it if there weren't any safety or wellness issues?
Well, just for clarification, the ZBA hasn't appealed anything, it was the residents that appealed.
Wait, I'm sorry, but they agreed with the.
And so the residents appealed and, you know, this did go to a, a, a pre-trial hearing. And I think that in that pre-trial hearing, there was clearly some movement after that as everyone weighed their liability.
What I wanna state was, town council had come before us as a convenience, as a courtesy. And they indicated to us, maybe, I don't know what the rest of you heard, was before it went to the planning board, the residents were gonna be notified so they'd be aware.
Well, if I could just stop you right there, cause I don't wanna, we can't really go into any discussions that happen in executive session. What I have made sure is that going forward is that the residents have been notified. But we really can't talk about when things run executive session.
I think we better, we, we better approve those minutes so that we can talk about it.
It's still under litigation.
Thank you.
Next item is Route eight, Route fifty-eight. We have scheduled a public meeting on March fourth at six P.M. to discuss the project and hopefully some easement donations from property owners along the two-mile stretch. And I just wanna take a quick second to go over this. This is a multimillion-dollar project that's funded by the feds and the state, primarily paid through our gas tax. And this is in essence our allocation coming back to Carver and they picked this as a project that they wanna fund. As a result of that, the state requires the town to do all the design engineering and land, securing rights to the land. So you heard our auditor mention there was a half a million dollars from chapter ninety invested. That half a million dollars that was invested was in the design of the roadway, which adds value to it. And that's the, the number that we put into, to the design and, and permitting component. The next piece is securing the right-of-way. And the good news is, is the project was designed not to require any permanent taking of anyone's property. However, when you're doing a construction project and you have a backhoe and it's backing up and forward and everything, it may go three or four feet onto someone's property. As a result of that, the backhoe is technically trespassing. So we need to go forward and have a right-of-entry or a donation of a right-of-entry for a period of time for a narrow strip that again could be one, two, three, four, five feet along the whole roadway to allow our backhoe to drive on people's property. Now, under the law is that we have the ability and the obligation to come back and do an appraisal of everyone's property and then to look at potential some compensation for that property or for the use of that property. In essence, an example I'm giving right now is we're renting that two, three, four feet for some period of time so we can back up and move, you know, and so forth. And then at the end of the time, we will then plant grass for that. Now, there's a hundred and twenty of these. And if we go forward and get an appraiser in and then, and then we then have to go through evaluation process and then we have to get a lawyer involved in each one of these, to rent somebody's property for just a temporary component, you know, maybe fifty dollars. You know, it's what the appraisal may come out to. But we may spend a thousand, two thousand dollars to actually do all the paperwork that's required to get to that. So in that example, and then what we're doing is we're, we're gonna be respectfully requesting that after everyone gets comfortable with the project, everyone understands that the grass will be replaced and the grading will be done, is for them to actually donate for a specific period of time the ability for us to drive the tractor over that and get the work done and then we'll replant that. That will save the town an awful lot of money. And hopefully, most people will comply with that. And that's for the temporary use of the site. There are some areas that we're going to have to have a permanent easement. And that's gonna mean that instead of just being able to drive the backhoe on it, you know, for some period of time, it would allow for us, if one of the walls that are being built along the area needs to be replaced in eighty years, that we would have the ability of driving down beside the, the wall within ten feet and being able to bring a tractor in there to replace the wall, rebuild it, and then drive the tractor back out. And also, there are some areas where there are slope easements that where the road has to be graded in order to make the pitch down is that that grade would go into somebody's, would be on someone's property and, you know, we don't want them digging out the grade because that would then destabilize the road. So there will be some, there's twenty permanent takings and a hundred, is it a hundred and twenty, a hundred?
Yes, more than a hundred.
A hundred, a hundred straight easements and another twenty per, uh, permanent easements that would need to be done. And again, what we're trying to do here is have the public meeting, go over the plans, discuss it, and hopefully have, you know, many of the residents and, and business owners along the area say, this is a good project for the town. I don't want you to waste money hiring an appraiser, hiring a lawyer and doing this, let's just make this happen. Will everyone do that? I have that hope.
Will we get a standard release form? Standard release form and get.
We have standard release forms that we have to do, yes. And then all of those then have to be recorded at the registry for some period of time.
And can we pay for those out of chapter ninety?
We can.
It's funny, I just picked up a new client from Plymouth and he got a easement for twelve hundred dollars in the town of Plymouth. So people might want the money for those permanent easements.
And that's why we have twenty of those.
And maybe they'll just be kind and donate it to the town.
We can only ask respectfully.
But they should know that they get a ten ninety-nine from the town for that money, so. They're gonna have to report it on their taxes.
The accountant comes out.
Yeah, I'm no kidding.
And it's, and it's public information.
Let's see, my last item that I have listed on the agenda is, you know, the chairman read some of the committees that are looking, that we're still looking for people. I have, actually have a file of people that have applied for committees and we created four committees at the last meeting. My intent is to point members in, in the first week or second week of March to all those committees. So if anyone's interested in being part of the town and, and the town is made up of volunteers and that's, that's what makes town special and gets things done, is kindly get an application in the selectman's office and get those to me by the end of the month to the extent possible. Two other quick items, I've got a, there's a Gateway Health Group meeting tomorrow morning to look at the potential cost increases for the Gateway Healthcare System. The MCI Plymouth Community Relations Board is going to be having a meeting in March. The Department of Revenue has responded to my request to have them come in and do a financial management update on the one we did. And at this point, they're, they're not gonna commit to that because they usually have a ten-year waiting list. But they're also doing the North Carver Water District review and they were here all day today, so they're, they're trying to balance out. They're like, if we weren't doing the North Carver Water District, we would come, but we've gotta balance all the communities. So that may take longer than I think, thought it was gonna take. Other than that, that is the extent of my updates.
Thank you. Selectmen.
Ellen?
Nothing tonight, I'm fine.
I just said that one, last week, that I was hoping that we, the town, could be announcing any progress on the MSBA requests for, and, and they're very detailed. And so the first part of that is the appointment of the building committee and I think that's one of the committees, Mike, that you're going to appoint to. So the community, we, we as a town are moving forward on that. That's basically all I wanted to say.
And Mr. Ward, on that, on the school committee website, the superintendent has posted minutes of the last meeting that they've had and she will keep posting everything that happened. So anyone can go there and take a look at some discussions we've had with MSBA already.
Good, good, very good.
I'd like to, Mike, if we could put those on the agenda because a lot of people don't have a computer and don't get up to look at those things. So if we made it a part of our agenda, maybe one of the, one of us, maybe you, Dick, could summarize it and give what the results are.
I'd like that. Promise that every chance I got during this process, I'd be trying to update.
I hate to appoint you that, but you brought it up, so.
No, I, I accept that. I mean, I want to do that, you know, anyway.
Just to keep the public informed.
Jack, you gonna?
I'm in the process starting a petition to reduce the CPA surcharge from three percent to one percent. Last year, we put a non-binding on and it passed over warmly and then when it got to town meeting, it was defeated, so I'm gonna try it again and make it permanent, so. I'll bring, I'm putting those petitions together, I've been working with town council. The other thing is I just wanna announce, just for people's information, that I won't be running for reelection this year. So anyone else who wants to take out their papers and run, they won't be running against me.
Thank you. There's a note on here about the board of selectmen goals and objectives session that will be conducted on March sixth starting at five-thirty P.M. The format for that is to be determined at this point in time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's gonna take place over at the, the administration building, which is called the Makepeace Center, eighty Makepeace Center. which is called the Makepeace Center, eighty Makepeace Center. And the public is welcome to attend. The, the facilitator is just going to be focusing on the selectmen and it's not for public comment and questions, it's really for you guys to determine what your goals and objectives are. Clearly, those that are running for selectmen should probably attend and just kind of observe that's there because now we're finding out there's going to be two seats that are going to be filled. And, you know, again, he'll be running the meeting and, you know, it should last between three and four hours. And I'm sure everyone's submitted their homework to him and we'll go from there.
Is that going to be set up to be televised?
So we have not talked about that.
He recommended that it be off-site, so no.
We can tape it, but not be live.
I'd, I'd like to get, we're so close to the election, I'd like to be able to have anyone that's running for selectmen at least have a little bit of input in it because two of those people are going to be serving on the board, so. I don't know if that changes the format or not, but I'll be going off the board in my field, so.
I think the challenge is when you have more than two people running, you don't know who it's going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, but still.
And that's why the, the thought is for them.
It gives them something to fight over when they're having their debates. I'm going to see if I can ask questions.
Well, they'll get, they'll get an opportunity to set calls the following year. So I think it's incumbent upon the incumbents to, to deal with it at this time. I would recommend that they attend so that they can.
Oh, absolutely.
Get a flavor for what it's, the process is like, because they'll be conducting it the following year. But I, I don't think it would necessarily be wise to have them included in the process at this time when they're not necessarily familiar with all the, all the minutia and the machinations of, of the job, you know what I mean? So I hope everybody would agree with that assessment, so.
Well, they might want to put more requirements on Mike to make his job harder.
Isn't the Borrego Solar Project enough?
Yes, yes. Discussion of operational override to pay for police officers, that's going to be tabled for another day. We've got a significant amount of business to attend to as far as the budget and determining what funds are available to us before we go out to the public with anything of this type of issue. So we're just going to table that for the time being. All right, license permits. Do you have any licenses tonight?
None.
None. Good, minutes, February eleventh. Make a motion, we approve.
Should we wait for Sarah or no?
We couldn't.
I mean, I'm ready to approve.
Right, she's not here tonight, so I would recommend that we just table it until next meeting when she shows up. Because she may have some changes on it that.
She usually does, that's why I motioned to approve.
You, you can wait.
Yeah, why don't we just put this off until the next meeting? Do we need a motion to table that or?
Motion to table.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, all right. Genonymous, very good. I don't have any topics that have cropped up within forty-eight hours of the meeting. Anybody else have anything earth shattering that needs to come out right now?
We'll remember after the meetings are over.
That's it, that's it. All right, citizens' participation. I see a hand in the air already. Okay, remember, civil, three minutes and come up and identify yourself, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Rod Forster, thirteen Lincoln Circle, Cranberry Village. My question concerns the gentleman who was speaking about the audit. And my question is this, he mentioned that Cranberry Village made a profit. I believe he, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he said seventy thousand dollars?
Ninety-seven hundred dollars.
Nine, oh, I'm sorry, ninety-seven hundred.
Ah, the seventy-seven.
My hearing's not so good. With a, with a profit, I know he said it's almost what he called break even. But what, but the fact that there is a profit, would, would that incline the board to possibly consider lowering the water rates? We've worked very hard down there to correct our water leaks and I, I think they've done a good job. And I was just wondering, hearing that information, if it would be something the board would consider? Knowing that information.
Certainly something that could be. It's something that could be looked at, Rod. I, I can't promise you anything here at this point because as, as you heard, in our budget process, we were pretty much on par with what our liabilities were going to be in our revenue. So it didn't leave a whole lot of room for maneuverability, so.
I was thinking though, where it's separate from like. You know. You know, it may not buy you a pizza, but down is down.
I'd like, I'd like to put it on the agenda for next meeting, have the town accountant come because they're making a profit, but we're heavily subsidizing.
Yeah, but to put it in context, I mean, we're, we're looking at a, a project that's, for that to run that well is about two hundred and two thousand dollars. And ninety-five hundred dollars was what was there. And the reason why the auditor said that that's about break even is because it's, it's not a large number in comparison to the budget. And one of the things that needs to be done is these projects need to build up a little bit of reserve. So that when we have to do some capital projects to it, is that there's a little bit of money to go in there.
There's, there's a lot of reserve.
Like it's fifty percent profit. This is, you know, less than a handful of profit, if you want to use that word. But really, the profit should be put into a stabilization fund for the Cranberry Village because you don't want to have this with your rates every year. You don't want to have a constant piece that's there.
They have a huge free cash figure. If you, if you can get it either from the town accountant or the treasurer, you can find out that the certified free cash is pretty high for a little fund like that. You know, the last time we looked at the rates was like five years ago. I think it would be, be hopeless, at least as a service to the people of Cranberry Village to take a look at that. You know, let, let them have their, you know, day in front of the Board of Selectmen.
We can certainly take a look at that, Rod.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. You guys are doing a good job, Don. Oh, be careful.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Nope. All right, who else? Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank the board for their support in what I am trying to accomplish. I want to thank both department heads who have helped me gather up information. They've been really valuable. I was going to talk about something tonight and I'm going to table it to meet with probably Mike or Dick privately and let them pass it on to the board. But I received a phone call today out of the board. No attempts have been really made to do any repairs over there. People came into the apartment that I reside at to do estimates to repair all the problems. Today, I got a phone call in which they told me my new cabinets are ready. But they're not going to do anything about the kitchen walls that had gotten damp. Could have mold in there behind the kitchen cabinets. They're not going to fix the bathroom, they're not going to do the hallway or the living room. I feel that this is a preemptive strike, like I had mentioned the other night to both of you about inspections of the alarm systems. My building, or the building that I reside in, has faulty alarms in the apartment I reside in. I've been out without a hallway alarm since September. And the bedroom alarm decided to die in December, in which the company is fully aware of what's going on there. I have discussed this with other members or other residents and they have similar problems.
Is this something we should get the fire department involved in? I mean, if we're talking about.
No, no.
On working alarms.
I don't believe so at this time, Mike, not at this time. I, I do have an answer for that, but I'd have to, I'm afraid to name names, okay, at this time.
Well, that's, that's not what we want to get into here anyways.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We only got like.
I don't want to do that.
A three minute.
What I want to do is I want to solve the problem, okay?
Mr. Chairman, on that, the building inspector contacted the State Building Department.
I thought so, yeah.
And they are going to be doing a state inspection, so I think we need to let that occur.
Do you know when?
I was just looking for the date and I can't find it right now, so off the top of my head, I don't know. But it's, it's coming up shortly.
Okay, this thing with doing the kitchen cabinets. My particular case, I've, I've been seven months with. I got a stove that maybe works every Saturday. I got two burners down, the oven, I mean, this, this, I'm not the only one, okay? I believe this is another one of the preemptive strikes because they know the inspectors are coming in.
Well, the bottom line is.
And I would like some more help.
Needs to be fixed, okay, so we need to.
I would like some more help with.
We need to get them in and we need to have our building inspector with them.
Yes.
And he's not going to sign off on anything if it's not done properly. So at that point, if they haven't done it and they're not addressing it, then I think we can go after the people responsible.
My biggest fear is that they're going to fluff this again when it comes to the alarm. Just put a new one up and say, okay, and then the alarm's going to go off at two, three o'clock in the morning because of some unknown reason, and this is what I've been living with. I'm not the only one. And I have yet to mention me in any of this. And you know I, how I, the stand I've been taking, I've been talking about others.
Rich, what we need to do is let the inspection take its course, okay? We can't do a whole lot until.
I know, I know.
We have the results in hand.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I wanted to bring you.
Okay.
Up to date.
Yep.
Because this does bother me.
Okay, well, it bothers all of us.
Another fluff job.
Right, there's a lot of folks that live back there and a lot of folks at risk if some of the stuff you're telling us is, is in fact true throughout that entire complex.
Yeah, I know of a, of a woman there that her refrigerator, refrigerator didn't work for about a year. It was off and on type of thing.
Well, if they're not getting any satisfaction through the management company, they need to come and register that issue at least with the town so we can deal with South Shore.
Housing.
Housing, and they can replace that management company if need be, so.
I just wanted to update you on some things that have happened.
Yep.
And, and when it's.
Well, spread the word to them, don't wait a year or a year and a half to bring.
No, they haven't, they've been complaining and they, many of them are so tired of complaining.
Mr. Chairman, what's productive is when we receive something in writing and then we can respond to it. I received a letter signed by multiple people. We sent it up to the state, we got a call back within a few days to set up a, a schedule. That, that's the appropriate mechanism to, to address these. We do need to have things documented by the individuals.
And that's what my concern was, has anyone talked to town council yet? Not necessarily, I mean, the town officials, because you both got involved in it and I just wanted to make sure we were covering our bases, that there wasn't going to be any sort of liability coming back on the town.
No liability, we will confirm that with them again, but right now, selectmen are acting as individuals. The board has not taken any action.
We've discussed it at meetings and that's my concern.
Right, in public session, that's okay.
Because I do, I, I'd have, if you want, I'll write up.
I'm not against it.
No, no, no.
I just, I want to make sure that the town.
Let's, let's, let the inspection take its course, all right?
I have one last statement to, to yours. I do have some questions, if you want me to write them up and you can ask the town council.
No, 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 we don't, we don't want that to happen. What we want is to have any comments or any issues addressed from residents put that in writing, that's what we're looking for.
All right, I've been, my, my.
Talk to.
Tonight was something different, so I, I just wanted to update.
Okay, talk to the rest of the residents over there, Rich, have them document all the discrepancies so that when the inspectors come down, we can address every one of those, okay?
Okay.
All right.
I want to thank you guys again, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mike, on the topics not reasonably anticipated, can I ask the town administrator a question? How about Mr. Santos, he was here before us the last time. Were you able to resolve, not paying him his money, just resolve his issue?
A letter was, was written after reviewing the case, found out that there was no liability with the town and did not see that his twenty-four hundred dollar request was justified. And that was hand delivered by the police department.
So he, as far as snow, we're getting plowed on.
We have not had any suits from him, I know he threatened to sue the town, I am not aware that he has gone forward with doing that. But since it is a legal matter, we referred him to town council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Just want to give one, everyone equal footing.
Okay, any other, oh, we got more candidates, okay, come on up. Make sure you identify yourself and tell people where you live.
Jim Hoffman, eight Great Meadow Drive. I just had a question on the Borrego permit, the permit that was just issued. And I just want to make sure I got all correct that the building inspector signed off on it, even though there's another set of eyes that still has to check the plan.
The building inspector is the only one responsible for signing off on the plan, he signed off on the plan. I just wanted to make sure that I took a look at it as well. And also that the, that the planning director took a look at it as well. That was not required, that was kind of my initiative to make sure that it had three sets of eyes, even though it only needed one. And as I mentioned in the presentation, that our building inspector, you know, identified some flaws with some earlier plans and they, they did correct those.
We just got a set of plans, I believe, that you passed on to some of the, the butters and we saw some discrepancies, that's why we were wondering why it was signed off on. Maybe that discrepancy will get caught by Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Hunter has reviewed the plans and the, the issue is that the building inspector reviews one element of the plan, the planning board is responsible for another element.
So, so our next step, if we have some issues with the element that the building inspector doesn't.
If you're looking at the burms or setbacks, those are planning board regulated. And I think there was an email that Mr. Hunter was around doing those questions today.
Okay, I haven't seen that one. So our next step is obviously just the appeal process?
If, if you want to appeal the building permit, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jim. Who else? Andrew? How you doing, Annie?
Hi. Indy Cattrelli, nineteen Pope's Point Road. I just had three quick things for you while listening to the proceedings here tonight. The first was, maybe you could look into the, the reason why the Cranberry Village generator has not been replaced, even though it was authorized last November in Article Six. They had a problem a few weeks ago, that some of my friends had told me about, they lost power and lost the generator. I called Mr. Farquharson, but I haven't heard a response, just as a citizen. Secondly, the North Carver Water District, Mike knows I'm very interested in this. I will be at the meeting tomorrow night. I believe, I think what should happen with that going forward, we should be very prudent and take things slowly because I believe this project was rushed into without seeing, looking down the road. So even though an additional two hundred thousand dollars might need to be spent or is considered being spent for clear water tanks, from my conversations with the commissioners there, I believe that before we spend another dime of money, the taxpayers' money in this town, we should look at the options of what can really be done with this, with this, this facility. Whether it be finding other commercial users, like, you know, that can get tankers full of water, sell it that way. Or we could look into just options of, of maybe privatizing or something, anything.
Sure.
You know, just, I mean, before we spend any more money, I think we should have all the options in. Because ripping up roads and extending pipelines down people's roads in front of their homes to better them for tens of thousands of dollars that they don't have to begin with, you know, isn't really cost effective for the town because it's a big vicious cycle. And thirdly, hearing different, different pieces here about the, the solar project at the Great Meadow area, I, I believe this is a very unfortunate turn of events. I have stood up since the beginning of this project and spoken against it. I'm not against solar, I'm all for them being placed in the right places, the appropriate places. And their, their neighborhood was not the appropriate place. And I'm sure Mike came in on this, you know, after the, after the sword's been put away and all the carnage has been done. He's, he's come in afterwards. But I have a, I have a document from town council, and I gave one to Helen, saying to the previous building commissioner that this project was not decided appropriately. He had every right to pull the permit. He had every right to pull the permit if he wanted to. I was told that the planning board, that one of the meetings where they okayed the minor modification, that they put a freeze on the project. In the town council's letter, he talks about a freeze, says you cannot put a freeze on a project that was improperly cited for use. And then I was told that maybe it was put on a freeze on the housing end of it. So if that's the case, how can they go forward with the solar project freezing, using a freeze from the housing project? The housing development? You know, so these are the questions I have, and the number one responsibility of any town government official, whether it be you, whether it be us on the finance committee, any board, the planning board, is to protect the citizens of this town, or every town. That's what our zoning protections are there for. When this project came up and it had industrial checked off on the site plan review, and it still was pushed forward, using a loophole from the state? You know, something that was written back when Jimmy Carter was the president? You know what I mean? This, when people were putting solar panels on top of their homes, that's what it meant by do not unreasonably regulate solar projects. Excuse me, I'm getting dry throat here. So this whole thing has been a travesty from the beginning. And I think that anything that needs to go forward with this, I don't know what the recourse is for these poor people now, built in thousands of dollars. I'd rather see the town spend money to protect their citizens than to worry about a decision that could possibly come down from a judge in a trial. And I'm as fiscally responsible as you can get, but you gotta protect your people first.
We share all your concerns.
Thank you.
Two, your first two questions, which were...
Why the generator wasn't replaced at Cranberry Village?
The town administrator and I had a discussion about that tonight, and we think we know where the... I don't wanna say breakdown, but where the...
Being addressed.
It's being addressed. And the other one was, the second one was the...
North Cabo Water District potentially spending more money.
You know, we're certainly open to any suggestions as to how we can improve not only the system, but the service to the residents and the cost-effectiveness. And in fact, we've looked at selling trailer loads of water to Deacon's Cranberry.
Yeah.
And the contract was...
Oh, yeah, that's very successful.
So I mean, we're looking everywhere we can, Andy, to try and deflect the costs from our citizens. And, because we understand the economy and how people are living today, so...
Exactly. Well, if you're looking at, like, those things should be looked into first, obviously, you know, before we spend more and more money, you know. Anyway, that's just my thoughts.
No.
Thank you.
You're right on target with a lot of things, we appreciate your input, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Yep. Anybody else? I see one hand way in the back there. There's a different phone ring, huh?
Good evening, my name is Marie Godetti, and I live in Cranberry Village. First of all, I wanna congratulate the board and the whole, all the departments in the town for doing so great on their budget. I think it's awesome, and you really did a good job, and I hope you continue. First of all, I want to address the water system for Cranberry Village. Within six months, we lost our water supply, twice in six months. The last time the water went out, it was reported at five o'clock in the morning. The company that the town hires to maintain that well never showed up for four hours after the call.
Marie, I don't wanna cut you off, but I wanna let you know that I have a letter stating those facts.
Oh, okay.
And I met with the town administrator earlier tonight.
Great.
And he is gonna look into all of that to find out where the breakdowns there were, okay? So, you know, I'm just letting you know that we are aware of it.
Yep.
And we are certainly looking into it, and, you know, that type of stuff is not acceptable. You know what I mean?
It's not, it's not, especially for senior citizens.
Right.
And the generator was voted and approved, and it should be installed. I mean, we keep losing our water, and it's unacceptable. And I thank you very much.
You're welcome, dear, thank you for coming tonight. Anybody else? Good job. It's nice to see different faces here every once in a while, instead of the same old whiners and complainers, right, Rod? I'm only kidding you. This is your forum, we're here for you, so...
We should give a pitcher of water up there, when their mouth gets dry.
No, Andy did a good job, too.
North Cabo Water District water.
Does anybody have anything else? This is how you identify issues and problems, and this is how you get it resolved, it's a team effort, you know? So, we thank you very much. At this time, we're gonna go into executive session. We're gonna move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to preparation for collective bargaining negotiations with unions, and for preparation for non-union contract negotiations with non-union personnel that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held in open session. And to reconvene... You wanna reconvene this in open session, Mike?
For the purposes of adjournment.
And to reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, roll call vote.
Aye.
Jack?
Says aye.
Mike? Dick?
Dick says aye.
Ellen says aye.
It's unanimous.
Can we take a little break?
No.
Yeah, I'm gonna recue.